So I will go ahead and officially call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our meeting for tonight, June 24. I let's see. So first up on the agenda, is there any public comments tonight? Okay. Thank you. So we have a few different items for tonight. The first is the leadership team has come back with a more explicit recommendation about what they would like to do with the find free in the next little while at least. So I'm not sure who wants to represent that, but feel free to take the floor.
Thank you. Um, so we tried to really respond to specific questions that were posed last month and previous conversations about fine free and build off of the the report that we gave that sort of talked about some of the data options, things like that. So in this, we were able to hear directly from the, the person who pulls most of our data from our library systems and from Ann about her team and then kind of come up with that final suggestion that in order to provide the board with as much data as we can to answer those questions and to engage our stakeholders as appropriately as possible, the idea that moving extending this for another year to the end of the fiscal year with the intent of doing sort of quarterly data updates. And using the budget process as a way to involve the city council in the conversation felt like a solution that would sort of satisfy all the needs at the table and allow us them to make a more informed decision at the end of that time. Still won't have that super clean data report that we'd love to have, but there'll be a little bit more that we can do year to year comparison. And I think Todd and Anne did a nice job explaining what the possibilities and limitations they would face would be.
So I just in answering the questions like, will a library wide find free model result in lower rate of return? And then the report says these numbers are comparable. So were you able to run something and compare numbers or?
Well, we included pretty much everything we could run in the report for the last packet. So we couldn't make some sort of, we can extrapolate some information, but we I would say we don't have enough to make certain statements about it being very definitive. And we won't have that perfect picture either at the end of this year, but we will at least have a little bit more of two comparable years that we can look at together. And then compare that to, to years in the past, we may also be able to run some sort of ratio data sets that look at overall circulation before COVID and then during the COVID closure to see if we can sort of summarize by comparing the sample sizes of circulation.
Right. And I don't, you know, I don't, I don't, I, I'm not, well, I guess really there weren't any numbers here, but what you're saying is the numbers were in, in last month's packet.
What, what we think we have now is.
That's fine. I can look at that. That's fine. Well, I'm on board with the staff recommendation. I I think the one comment of the report that was really interesting was despite longer loan periods, patrons kept three week items for less time during COVID. So I guess that reflects having enough time to actually read a book, I suppose.
I'm on board as well. You know, we'd love to have really great data, but we won't. So we'll make the best decision we can when we get there with the data we have.
Thanks, Tom and Carol. Are there other questions or comments related to the, the proposal for the next steps to find for here?
John's wanting to talk. It's your mouth moving, John, but we can't hear you, but.
Now, how about now?
We're good. We're good now, John.
What was the proposal?
It's the first big item in the, the packet. So the proposal would be to and correct me if I misrepresent this, the, the proposal is basically to extend fine free for one additional year so that we can both collect deeper data as well as do more advocacy about what the change might entail with the city and others. And then after that year, we would then be in a more comfortable place to make the final call. But like because of COVID and other things like we don't have as good of data as we might like to make that comparison. So giving this time would allow us to do that and allow us to better advocate for it, I think.
So is your motion? Do I need to vote?
There has not yet been a motion. I was giving it a minute to see if there are any other questions or comments or anything. They don't particularly seem to be though. So I certainly would welcome a motion to approve the step to basically follow this recommendation here to extend the fine free model for an additional year.
So moved.
Thanks, Carol. Tom, thank you. All in favor?
I.
And any opposed?
I've John's opposed. I think six months is plenty, but I'm outboarded anyway.
Okay. Thanks for making that clear. So motion passes. And we'll go ahead then and look at the second item, which is the annual board report. Elsewhere, if you'd like to speak to that.
Yes, the annual process. I looked back through previous board reports or board packets and it's not always done this month, but this is a good time to start it in case we need a little bit more time to work on it. This document ends up being submitted on finance and used in a couple of different city publications. Along with the same report for all boards and commissions, just as a reminder of where this goes. And what's in the packet is the, the report that was submitted last year. So that went over the achievement from the year before. And the goals for this, the year that we're just closing. So the conversation tonight should be focused on any nuances that this group would like to see reported in, in the accomplishments or anything that we'd like to strike from goals and not move to accomplishments and to accomplish what wasn't in goals. And then after that, we can talk about what we'd like to list as goals for the next fiscal year. At that point, oh, go ahead.
I just, I was confused because it says accomplishments for fiscal year 2020 and should it be 2021?
Yes, it should be.
Okay. Okay. But then when you set off, you start off saying it was last year anyway. So and also then also on the, the goals for 20 should be 2022.
Oh, wait. So we're, so this document lists the accomplishments for last year. So the document we're looking at right now is the one that was created after this process last year. So these are the accomplishments we said that we did last year and the goals that we had set for the year that's just closing.
Okay.
These dates are correct. I'm sorry. I, I heard you, but I answered the wrong way. This, every time we've done this, it feels like it's, it's a clunky process, but there's, there's really no other way to do it than the way that it's been done. I don't think. So we can, we more or less can take the accomplishment part sort of off the table for discussion. That was, we discussed that last year at the close. The focus now is going to be looking at the, the goals that we had set for this year. Deciding which of those does the group feel like it's appropriate to shift into the accomplishments? And if there are other accomplishments that we'd like to include, or like I said, add nuanced language, kind of explain anything we want to talk about. And then we will be setting the goals for the coming year.
Okay. So this, this doesn't have goals for the coming year in it.
Correct.
Okay.
This conversation, then library staff comes back together and works on a draft, which we bring back to the next meeting for, for board to comment on if it were ready for approval, if the board felt good about it, it could be approved at the next meeting. It does not need to be. It's not submitted to the city for several months yet. So we, if we brought it back next month for a draft, we wanted more changes done, we'd have time to do another month of editing and unchanging to bring back another version to be approved. So we've got some room to play. But I think starting it this month is puts us in the best position to end up with a, with a strong document.
My question elsewhere is, and the section goals for fiscal year 2021. The seven bullet points there. When did we, when did we approve that in, in relation to when everything shut down in March of 2020?
We would have worked on this document a year ago. So those would have been voted on probably in the July or August meeting.
Okay. After we shut down.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's right. Okay. I was just trying to think about how relevant they were in the context of what you dealt with for the last 15 months.
Wes, would it be possible perhaps to the screen share the, just that section of the document? I don't know if it'd be helpful others. I'm flipping back and forth between screens because I don't have paper. Might be useful if we could all see the, the seven bullets.
Yep. I'll, I'll see if I can get it pulled up in just one second. Of course I can't find exactly that slot. There we go.
I got it. You want me to do it?
Yeah, if you want, that's fine.
Sorry, this is looking like less of a good idea all of a sudden.
Yeah, that work?
Oh, that's neat.
Yep. Thanks, Patrick. So yeah. I think really then the things to talk about are what we feel like we accomplished of these goals. And then perhaps what goals we might have for the coming year to just to like be very explicit about what the, I think, range of conversation topics is likely to be known.
And there I, I was trying to go back through minutes of past conversations about this because it is a difficult process. It, it seems like in some years, the first step was to identify things from the list of goals that people felt comfortable simply moving from goals to accomplishments to kind of clear that first level of we feel like that could, that could be the base of, of next year's accomplishments, but, but I defer to the group to how, how they'd like to proceed.
I mean, I think that approach sounds reasonable to me as a first step.
I'm sorry to be a little confused, but are you saying take the goals as they currently are, move them down? Are we going to review them one by one?
I believe speaking to the ones that we feel comfortable could just be moved across so that we can kind of strike those from the list and then get into more details on any that are more contentious or more complicated. So it would be kind of working through them and saying, yeah, I think we did this one. This one's good. We don't really need to talk about this one that much more.
But I think number one, we, we would, from my perspective, say we partially accomplished and it's an ongoing process. Does that sound fair?
Can you tell us why you see that as progress? How did, where were the training opportunities?
Yeah, I would say the encouraged attendance at the annual Iowa meeting was the, the main training option that.
So that wouldn't still be, that wouldn't be a training curriculum. It would be. We've always encouraged attendance, but in participation in the annual retreat, but I'm not sure if I see that as a, the state's curriculum.
Fair enough.
And I, I think everyone should sort of participate, but I know what the state curriculum looks like and I don't, and I could have missed it, but I don't remember having any other sessions.
Yeah, I, in some of my reports, talked a little bit about some of the video sessions that they had and, and tried to see if others would be interested in reviewing some of them and talking through them and stuff, but nobody ever took me up on it. So that was part of my attempt to do that, but it just didn't really land for various reasons. So it's been a complicated year. So.
I don't mean as Chris, this is a really unusual year. And so to me, when I read it, I think about success versus ongoing goals.
Yep. Yeah. I didn't take it criticism. I was just saying that that was one of the concrete things that I had tried to do towards this goal that I did not feel succeeded. So in, in that regard, like we did try to do something. It didn't land. I don't think I wouldn't say.
And we can talk about how other libraries have had success with this later on about how they do do that successfully. Um, I'm not sure it's been one of our strengths up to this point, but it could be a goal.
Yeah. And I think there's probably something to be said for thinking about what kinds of onboarding materials we could provide for the, the new folks coming in, like there, there's some, it's not like there's nothing, but with stuff like that, there's always more that could be done. And it always is, you have to brush the dust off by the time you do it again. And there's things that get missed and things like that. So.
And it's not only on the participation side. I think it was an odd year on the state library side too. So their development materials is complex. It's just, this is such a weird year. That some of these, these goals had unique challenges.
Yeah, that might be an area that it might make sense to have a subcommittee or something work on instead of just having us kind of talk about it off and on here and there, like to, to make a more concerted effort around it.
I was actually about to say that I agree this should carry on and I would be happy to work with a committee to think about how to implement a more clear curriculum for board members.
Awesome.
So maybe one of the successes is done is develop, exploring an implementation strategy for this. For how we go forward with this.
Better than just we blew it off and didn't do it.
I, you know, so I've sat on the states. In fact, I've chaired their trustees board and I don't think we're the only ones dealing with this. It's just been a really quirky year. And I think every board has had some of the same challenges of how do you fit this in and where do you make it relevant? And it's, it's, I don't know if anyone's doing a great job at it, but it's good to learn best practices.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had more of a conversation about it than I recall having previously. So that, that is progress certainly. But it seems like we should still have a goal that carries on for next year that speaks to what additional things we want to do here. I guess that's kind of how I maybe catch it. Any other questions or comments on one? We can probably just work through these in order. That may be easiest.
Well, here, this is John. Here's where the, and it may be because I, as a board member, I've been more focused on start providing services and safe services. Is there been a document that's been prepared by staff? And if I missed it, I apologize. It just summarizes from their perspective, what they feel has been accomplished on one through seven, what they'd still like to work on and where they think the status of that, just a recapitulation. On those, on those four point, one through seven bullet points.
Hasn't been anything shared. I, I have a draft document in front of me that I prepared for this conversation. But the hope is, I think that we sort of work together to identify what those, those accomplishments that, that really rise to the top for both the board and, and the staff. And that's the way that this conversation has been done in the past. When the draft is, is shared with the board at next month's meeting, there will be obviously there'll be a narrative with the, the suggestions from the board and then any additional content that the, the staff would like to have considered by the board for inclusion.
So are you asking us just to brainstorm some ideas for, for inclusion in that draft? I was with just what I understand. Okay.
Yeah, I think we, it, it really helps the leadership team to hear kind of even just the themes that the board would like to have rise to the top. This stands sort of as the board statement of accomplishment and goal setting. As the director and as a leadership team, we have a few other places where we sort of give our, our staff annual report that, that has, you know, the, the rest of the things that may not, may not be things that this group chooses to highlight, but that we would like to have recorded in those steering documents. But like I said, in preparation for this, I did go through the list in conversation with leadership, with leadership team and, and talked about which ones, sort of what would we add to these? What would we, how would we justify success or, or doc, or, or carrying law and things like that? So I mean, I'm, I'm happy to speak to them, but would also really value hearing the input from this group so that we can incorporate that on into the next draft.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say elsewhere is these are, you're, I thought the task at hand is to analyze what's been accomplished on what's been set forth as goals for fiscal year 2021.
That, that's the first part. The, the second part is the goal setting for the following year. Okay.
Accomplishments right now.
Yeah. But I, I, what I'm saying is I don't feel that I can have. And it's maybe my, you know, my, my lack, you know, of delving into it. I don't feel I have enough information at my disposal to, to determine whether the staff feels that they have, for example, established new ways for community and library to communicate, including web-based in-person postal mail options. And I don't know if the staff feels that they've accomplished that or not. So.
I think we should not lose sight of the fact that this is the board's report. So I think we need to take some responsibility for providing some input.
I can't provide any because I have no idea what's been done generally on these topics. So.
So as with that, I'd like to offer one possibility and it's looking, reviewing our policies and practices with consideration given to inequities in our community. Because when we look at issues such as fine free or even, you know, our service hours, those issues, while we have a restorative justice statement there, I think addressing usage inequities would be a little more specific to what's on my mind. And this would also be even in review of collections.
Could you say what you said at the beginning of that again? I heard.
Well, I'm sorry. And it could be, so you know, what I was looking at saying, you know, that we actively reviewed our policies and current practices with consideration to usage inequities or an, an inequitable burden on different parts of our community. Because it seems like we've had a lot of discussions about both access fines, collections with that issue in mind. It's not simply restorative justice. It's large. It's, it's more inclusive than that. And it's, it's localized.
I think somewhat related to that as well as our first time of the meeting, it would probably make sense to have listed as a goal. The evaluation of fine free and the making the final call on it. That seems like a good goal for next year. I think also speaking to John's earlier point, I, I have a similar feeling on some of these of like, I, I'm not confident that I know exactly where we ended up. Which is fine, but that may be something to consider as we talk about the goals for next year, as this is the board report, like can we, you know, try to focus the goals that we do set forward for next year of things that we do feel like we will know, you know, that if somebody just asked us, we would be able to say where we were, you know, instead of some of these things that you know, getting into the operational details a little bit more, like, I'm not sure if we got a proposal from a vendor for the second floor reflooring or not, like I, I don't know offhand. Like you may have told us, and if you did, I apologize, but like I, I just don't know that offhand, but there's a lot of other things that if somebody asked me about, I could say, yeah, I feel like we're really making progress on that. We did X, Y, and Z. And I feel good about that.
Another possible, if, if this part is feeling too hard because of limited knowledge or just sort of it's awkward to do it over Zoom. Like I said, we've got multiple months before this is due anywhere. So if the group would rather have leadership team just share sort of our thoughts about what goals were met and what weren't at next meeting. Along with the first draft of goals, which we've yet to discuss, but we'll be doing next. That we're, I'm totally comfortable with that too. If I didn't want to put forward something that might weigh the, the opinion of the board, because I do, again, I think that this is the board's opportunity to sort of stake the claim of what accomplishments have, have arisen in their mind of things that either they contributed to or, or of particular interest. But we are, we are absolutely ready to put forward the, the sort of commentary on these goals and for any goal, moving into accomplishments and then for any accomplishments that weren't listed here that we think should be. It, I mean, we're ready to do that for next meeting if it would, if it would resonate more with the group.
So also one other thing we've done in the past is we've encouraged people after they get a chance to walk away and think about this to send you items for inclusion for discussion in the next go around, because sometimes as well as you need to walk around and mull over. But with a deadline of, of how long you can handle having those things being emailed to you. And, and just in a kind of a quick and dirty bullet list of what do people think we did, we did accomplish and what do people think we need to accomplish? Just so that it's not the, the task isn't put only on the staff. But the board can think this through a little.
I, I would be comfortable taking feedback all the way through Monday, July 12th, really, I think we could, we could, we could have the leadership team's work done before then, and then continue to fold in as we receive those. Don't feel like you have to wait. But I think through, through the 12th would be would work for us.
Sounds good to me.
It's certainly good with John because he won't be for, he will no longer be on the board for the next meeting. So kicking the can down the road is that's not the right term. That's not the right term because there's going to be a lot of staff work to, to, to articulate in summary form what's been accomplished on the goals for fiscal year 2021. But if I was going to be there next month, it would certainly be helpful for me to have a nice bullet point summary, right?
But John, think of the things you're proud of that were accomplished this year. So you're not totally off the hook. Think of the things that were accomplished this year before you jump away. You're not totally off the hook because you can talk about on progress more than the new people can.
Oh, I, I, I can. I think the. Oh, I, I, I can. I think the, the, and I know I was difficult at times. I think the the, the, the service, the ability to provide services under very extreme conditions to the community and then just transition transition back into the facility being open and safe is, is I don't know how they, how the staff got anything else done, to be quite frank. That was a Herculean task in my mind.
Agreed.
And I think that right there is an important thing to say in our report. I think that's valuable to include.
Well, I think you can hold in number two and certainly number four as, as a part of that. As a part of that overall successful getting through the year process.
Okay, um, so I think at this point, you know, there were a few things that stuck out that we've shared now with Ellsworth, and there's a plan then for the trustees as sort of homework, if you can kind of think about accomplishments for the previous year and things that would be good goals for next year. And just email them to Ellsworth by July 12th, so that you can incorporate that with the leadership team's work and then have that all to bring back to us to share for the July meeting. That would be great. Also, do you feel good with that?
Yeah, I'm going to suggest also that after we finalize this, which maybe we'll see what happens, that we kind of do a retrospective on the process and see if we can prepare for next year by kind of documenting what might work. Because when I was looking through board minutes from past years, it feels like this has always been sort of a a difficult document to figure out how to do together. So I wonder if even if we just make a note in, I mean, it could be in my report or in the president report or wherever that sort of a commentary on what, what we might suggest for next year. Because again, I always try to look back and see what's worked in the past. But this one was sort of, all different processes have been tried, didn't feel like there's been a, a good solid way to hit it. So I think if we, especially if we find a way that if this way feels good at the end of the process, we can write it up so that next year we have a little bit of a guide.
Yeah, that sounds good. I think with things like this, in my experience, it's often helpful to like clearly distinguish between the part where you're being more divergent, you're like brainstorming, like all of the ideas are good, we're just trying to get it all out there. Versus when you're trying to get more to convergent, like, we all agree, this is what we actually want to appear on the report. And like, I think, you know, unfortunately, it's easy to fall into the trap of kind of sort of trying to have both of the conversations at once and having neither of them really work because of that. And that felt a little bit like what happened tonight, maybe, but and so maybe if we do this email thing, that gives us a chance to all kind of go off and do our own brainstorming without having to worry as much about what other people are saying or thinking or whatever, just our own ideas, and then come back and then kind of consolidate from there and boil it down to what really is central.
I think that's a great idea.
Great. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda then, which is the no-boo budget request.
Yeah, another, another annual part of, of our conversation together. As, as usual, as soon as it before we, we continue to do, we tried to break this into those ongoing relatively prescriptive or pre-committed expenses, which I call ongoing and annual here. And then into things that are maybe a little more unique to this year or a different kind of ask than we've done before. There's, there's some speculation in this year as we look forward and we're not sure at what point we're really going to be back in the in-person. And what that's going to look like for formerly large in-person events like LibCon and and other things like that. So some of those, you know, for those of you who have been on the board for a while, you'll see the numbers are a little different than past year asks. Some things that went that we, that we had lowered because of COVID. We're sort of slowly starting to to ramp back up to pre-COVID levels, like the Iowa City Book Festival contribution. And, and any of those that we work with partners, of course, I had conversations with them about what, what their visions were like and what they thought would work. In the more project-related strategic initiatives or related expenses. It, you know, facilities enhancements is almost always included in this in one way or another. That helps us take on those unexpected expenses. Obviously does not supersede the operationally budgeted building maintenance replacements, maintenance of that kind of work, but does allow us things like if we decide to move a service point or change the way the whole shelves are situated. Just gives that flexibility at the moment. There are a couple of big asks in this, and I absolutely recognize that there are a few things that the group might want to talk about. Since I got here, a fairly common conversation that staff have initiated is around hours of service. And the idea of, of do we open too late or do we close too late? Should we shift that? And there was a survey done a number of years ago, but I think it's been long enough now that that we may want to reengage around that. But I want to be clear, not right now. This, this is looking at the, I was saying, fourth quarter kind of survey work around what the community might like in their, in the hours. I think right now it's still a scramble of some people are still working from home, some people are looking for different jobs. I don't think that right now is a fair time to say to the community, let's talk about library hours, what you need in that way. But I think that as we get towards the end of the year, we might be. And I, I want to really work with the community about is the ICPL that was here, you know, the day before we shut down for COVID, the one that's needed anymore? Have things changed? Have needs and wants changed? And some of that we can do sort of cheap and dirty through Survey Monkey, in-house tools, focus groups with the community, things like that. But I think that we will need to engage some professional help in making sure we reach as much of the community as possible for these more serious inquiries around service and our delivery, things like that. That's kind of where the the, the thought around that community engagement about hours and services comes from. And I, it may be overly aspirational to think that this year people will even have enough grounding to be able to talk about it, but I think the beginning part should be done, the conversations about what is the value to the community as we get back more towards normal? We I, I think it's, I think the community is getting more and more ready to talk about what do they need from us. And having some resources there will just allow us to be more precise, to have a little more true guidance in how we're doing. The other, another big one, I was assuming the group might want to talk about is staff learning. We know, of course, this group is aware that we have a few other places, resources for that come from. We have in our operational budget, every year there is money allocated for that. I, every year that I've been here to do the budget, I have requested an increase of that, and I plan to continue to do that. I think staff is our biggest expenditure. It's our biggest investment. It's, it's the place that we can shine the brightest. But not if we don't continue to develop and, and hone that talent. So we're, I think we're kind of at a great point to take this on to. We've got Kelly Kearns has started with us. And she has quite a bit of experience with sort of curriculum development and staff training, facilitating different types of staff in shared learning. We, we're all coming back together. I think this will be good for morale. It will help staff feel engaged and feel valued. And, and having the COVID shift and everything we've done has really helped me as a director, and I think the leadership team as department managers be able to isolate some of our, the, the needs we have in skill development. So whether that's sort of broad-scale project management, more isolated executive function training. We always have our strategic initiatives, like cultural competency, things like that, bias. So it feels like a really good time to take on some very structured staff trading opportunities. We do have about 100 staff, a little less than 100 staff. So when you, you start to break down the numbers, it's, it's not a whole lot per person. And, and we, what I'm imagining in this curriculum is that there will be some absolutely shared learning that everybody will participate in, and then some more focused on different departments, different work teams, things like that. We're fortunate to also complement this with the Lolly Eggers continuing education funding. So we, we have a few places to pull from, but I, I feel pretty strongly that this is a good time to invest in staff as a resource and to to really help to build some of these skills that that'll take us forward. Especially if we're taking on some new and different community engagement around aspirations for the library. I think there's even some training that we'll need to do around, how do you have those community conversations? How do you collect that information? And how do you then turn that around into practice? But, but I know, I know I'm asking for a lot there, and, and I'm willing to talk more about it if people have questions.
Well, I, here's my thought on that, Ellsworth, is that and I'm not going to, I can't add it up, but it seems like in the last few years, if we went through and added up the numbers of years of experience of librarians and staff that have resigned as they got retirement age, right? I suspect will be well over 150 or 200 years of experience, right? So my position is you need additional dollars for training to help bring the, to accelerate the learning curve and hone the skills. I like your use of the word hone the skills of the new staff. My position is you have my support on that 110%.
Can you tell me the amount in the general budget that this is supplementing? Because this isn't the only staff development line.
No, I, you know, off the cuff, I feel like it's six or 7,000 in the operational budget, but I will need to verify that.
And can you give us a comparison point with past budgets after when you look at this?
I can. It's, it has not, I think it's been a gentle curve, curve up, but not, I would absolutely can.
But just to make sure, I'm going to say it back to you. You think that there's a $6,000 to $7,000 estimate included in the, the general budget and that the snow boot is to supplement that to a total of about 18? About, to about 18,000.
Yes, and then we, the, in the operational budget, there's some crossover in use of continuing education funds and conference attendance. So obviously, we, we do expect staff attending conferences to be doing continuing learning, and, and those could often become as credits to to library continuing education. But, but I will isolate that. I'll bring it back to you, Rob.
And perhaps I'm the only one that's looking to you. Do you need approval of this tonight of the no-boo budget, or is this under discussion? Because I'm wondering about a comparison to last year's noble budget.
It doesn't have to be approved tonight.
I'm the only one that wants to see the comparison to our previous noble budgets. I don't want to create extra work, but if it's of value to other people to see what, what we spent no boo on last year and the levels that we spent. It might help with a more informed decision.
Yeah, it had occurred to me that that would be helpful, but I won't be around, so I wasn't going to press for it.
I think it would be helpful because we, in the last year, I think we've approved three budgets, the operating budget, the CIP proposal, and this one, and remembering what they all are is clear when it's in front of me and not when it's not.
Sure, that's no problem.
Also, with our previous noble budget, because of the change in our operations, did we go through all the committed expenditures, or did we end up having a higher balance that we can use on no, no boot budget than is traditional? Because I think we may not have spent all of those funds that we committed last year, and some of these may be rollover projects.
We absolutely did not hit all the projects from last year. There were some that either because of material shortages or just inability to get the services scheduled because of delays or oversaturation of need. There, so I can, I can bring back sort of a report on where we ended up. And obviously, with the noble budget, unlike the operational budget, if it's unspent, it just remains untouched. There's no, no obligation to spend it out. I, I'm less able to do that this very moment because we're, some of the no boo projects, we we're, we're finalizing now, and we're sort of getting those invoices back as we get to end of year. But I can, I'll take a look and sort of try to figure out, because they are so different every year, maybe even just categorically looking at sort of those, those chunky pieces of staff, facility, service, kind of break it down that way, and then give you a little more specifics about what we, products we did or did not spend out last year.
Firstly, I'm more interested in patterns than your exact balances.
Elsewhere, I, I'm too, would be interested in seeing that information, but even without it, I can weigh in on the staff learning. It sounds like we might be spending 20 or $25,000 if you throw in the conference or something like that out of a $6 million budget. And I would say, you know, you're at a quarter or a third of the minimum about spending, so whatever you can find. You should, you should be spending on that. Some folks would suggest a percent or so of, of your budget, or maybe say of your staff budget, so that'd be less, but you're well below that.
Yes, I remember the first budget I saw with the education or professional development line. I was surprised how low it was. So I'm fully on board with spending as much money on that as we can reasonably spend.
It's, it's tricky. I mean, I fully respect the, the city's budgeting practices and the history of, of how they have invested. But I would say compared to other places I've been, this is a conservative education funding model. And I'm, I'm really excited to hear the, the shared support for that. I have mixed feelings about sort of making it putting the burden of that on, on the no boo funding. I would like to see the city kind of increase their willingness to, to participate in that funding. And I think part of it is just going to be, you know, keeping records on the return in that investment and, and trying to show how meaningful that, that can be. I, that, that is something that departments have spoken about with each other about sort of how do we, how do we balance those needs? And again, with full respect to the city's extremely complicated stewardship model and financial responsibilities. I, we're very lucky to have some other opportunities, and I look forward to kind of, kind of working through those. And like so many other things, sometimes an initial investment will put you in a better position to find some alternative funding in the future. So as we work through this, thinking about, can we look toward any grants or other soft money, or are there things that we could do first with our staff that we could then model with other regional libraries to get buy-in and contribution, things like that? So I think there'll be a lot, it'll be a lot of fun to kind of start getting deeper into it and learning other ways we can expand in the future.
I think that's a really good way to, to chase it down and, and kind of tighten the screws at the city. I completely agree with that. I want them to have more skin in this game and not have us rely so much on no boo. There are two things that are standing out to me. One was already mentioned, and it has to do with how much we've changed as, as a library since COVID. And that that change is going to continue, but it would also have to do with how, how any librarian will change. So when I think, when I say that, I mean, with respect to, for example, digital collections and things like that. Our library is very dynamically changing, very rapidly. And it would be a disservice to the community as a whole if we didn't chase that down and figure out what our next move is going to be big scale and. what our next move is going to be big scale and really start thinking big. Because if we don't, it's, we're going to be left in the, left in the dust, so to speak, so.
I'm, I'm more than happy to speak to any, any parts of this that people have questions or concerns or would like to see adjustments on. The, the short answer to when does it have to be approved is whenever the group approves that we, I mean, obviously we move into the next fiscal year, July 1. But that doesn't mean that we immediately go into NOBO spending. With the exception of some of those more prescribed, you know, the 50% staff for the book will be our children's staff, things like that. Those will begin to be spent, but anything on the other side is, is absolutely flexible until this group decides to, to vote on it. I don't think we, I think it was approved at the July meeting last year. So it's, it's not, not on a, not a heard of thing to move forward.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the trustees on this one? Okay, otherwise it sounds like Ellsworth has some guidance on things to think about and, and tweak a little bit to give a little bit more information for next month and then you all can talk about it then and hopefully move forward.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, then the big library use policy update. Thank you to the staff. I suspect, given the amount of change here, that it was a bit of an ordeal to probably work through all of this, so I appreciate that you've done that work. Jason, is there any person you want to speak to in particular?
Thanks, no. It's like you said, it's detailed here. I, I hope you've had time to review and think it through. We've got a number of amendments. I think overall philosophically, I guess the main point is trying to clarify this for staff and the public of, of expectations of use. We looked at 20 years of changes and I think came away with the idea of instead of looking at that history and seeing what got added every time we reviewed in terms of, oh, we noticed this behavior, let's put that in to clarify, which I think is fine. But I think we're at a point where we're also saying, what are we seeing that we don't notice anymore in the last 15 years that we can remove? And that helps to clarify in its own way to make this document not look like a punitive list of things that we might encounter as staff, but also just change that tenor of the document for the public and so there's, there's a number of things there. We also had so much great input from staff during in-service day this year. And so there was a lot to draw from there. That they were focused on specific lines of the library use policy, in particular sleeping, the cursing line and the running boisterousness. And so there was a lot of great input from staff there, which always helps when you're looking at this as a committee to know that you've got your seven, eight people in the room, but also the voices of, of the rest to backing you up, so. A lot in there, probably the biggest one for the group would be the sleeping amendment. Because I know that's been something over 20 years that that came in and out of the board's decisions. Robin knows more than anyone, as I saw her name popping up throughout that history, a contentious one, but I think staff came away with a just a slight amendment to that that I think will be useful going forward to, to help clarify what we're looking for in behavior related to sleeping in the building. Focusing more on health of everyone rather than the specific behavior itself. And if any of them are you'd like more clarification, I'm happy to, to do that with you. Or if you just want background.
I appreciate the work you went to, to, to improve the, the tenor, like you say, of the whole thing. I just, I had, I mean, my question, 809.3, you talk about disruptive behaviors. And, and I don't have a problem with any of those being identified as disruptive. And then also in 809.4, you talk about behaviors conducive to providing a clean and hygienic environment. And then at the end, it talks about enforcement, so. And then it says they will intervene to stop prohibited activities. So are the disrupted activity, disruptive ones, are they prohibited? Or are the ones like not conducive to a clean environment such as smoking, is it prohibited? Or is it just not conducive to a clean environment? I, I guess that's, that's the only thing I really have to say. It's like is disruptive, being disruptive is that prohibited?
I think I understand what you're saying. I, I think this was, this model came directly from the Denver Public Library. And the way they formatted their policy, it really was, I, I believe adopted by that group in order to, instead of just having your laundry list of actions that are considered prohibitive, but also maybe some other things at our request. This put them into categories of illegal behavior, disruptive behavior, and maybe dangerous. And then the environment itself, so the building and cleanliness and things like that. All of them being sort of behaviors that we would, that would require staff intervention. Does that clarify for you?
Yeah, I just, I guess I was just wondering if it, if the, if the, the enforcement clause is sufficient to prohibit the, like disruptive behaviors, or if that needs to be. I mean, I don't, I can't imagine a patron who's being disruptive is going to ask to see the library use policy. But, you know, and I, I do, I, I do appreciate what you, what you've done here. I, I don't really have a, have an issue. I just.
I think if I'm understanding right, then enforcement section is called out, I think as a guide to how, how the board would like us to act on the things up above. So there's still rules regarding the enforcement as well. And so I especially liked adding the line that I took from Edmonton's Public Libraries in the 809.6, sort of mentioning that people may not be aware of their conduct as disruptive, which is just sort of a, a nice clarifier for everyone that says, we're going to come into this interaction with an understanding between us that you won't know all the rules potentially. And that we're going to assume good intent on everyone's part when we have that conversation. And so that's, I guess that section's called out separately because there are sort of intricacies involved with how we want to deal with enforcement too.
I think if I'm understanding, I like the way this reads. Thank you for your work on it. The only place where it says these behaviors are prohibited is in, I think it says criminal activity or something. The others just say disruptive, so can we? Does the enforcement apply to them?
Oh, I see.
The question that I
It doesn't say they're prohibited. It says they're disruptive.
I was getting it, but you stated it better.
Hmm, I see. I think that's a case of being too in the
Prohibited and disrupted activities or something to just lump these other categories into the enforcement paragraph.
Yeah, I think, I would think I was talking over the top of you there. Did you just recommend adding prohibitive before disruptive?
Well, you could say prohibited and disruptive activities, or you know, some way to, to bring in the things that you, to cover enforcement of things you don't want people doing, like smoking.
So maybe clarification just in the last line before hyphenate, the hyphenation line. Or the yeah, the colon, that explains, yeah, that there may be some intervention involved in each of these.
Because I do like the way that it's written. I, I really do. And I agree with the informing part. I mean, it may be that someone is being disruptive and does not, doesn't see sleeping as being disruptive, but you know. I mean, I think it's great. Obviously you've done a lot of work on it.
We could, if the group is okay with, maybe there are more questions, but I'll just, we, we could add those, those lines in that, that's no problem. That should be pretty easy to do. And I think it's a case of being so deep in this thing where you're like, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing it from your side now thinking, oh, you're right, that is just a list of some things and so that makes more sense now.
My, my only critique of this document is two-fold. One, I disagree with the removal of the words profane and obscene in 809.302. It's a library, not a lot, men's locker room. And I think we need a clear statement to parents who bring children in and the children that profane and obscene language is not going to be tolerated in that library. There's certain, in my mind, there's certain thresholds of behavior that are expected in the library. And refraining from profane and obscene language is one of them. And the last one is I think the bathrooms, we're next to see that striking, there were somewhere where the language prohibiting using the bathroom for your, as laundromat and washing your clothes and bathing.
809.405.
Yeah, yeah, there it is. 809405. It's a restroom for public use. It's not a bath house. It's not a laundromat. So I, I had concerns about, about those two. Other, otherwise I'm fine with the changes.
And I think, I think that's, that's fair. The, the idea of removing both those things was that by removing, it doesn't mean that we, we may not enforce it if we feel like it's impacting service. It's more that it gives us more flexibility regarding intent. The bathroom one in, in particular is one that I personally have never encountered. It was added because it happened at one point. Like most things that got added in, it was added in because it happened and, and we didn't want it to happen. And so we put it in there. Whether that's what stopped the behavior, I, I guess I don't know, but I don't see it. And I think we still would address if we saw somebody, for instance, shaving in the bathroom and say, you know, the facility isn't, i- isn't able to handle, you know, the, the shaving cream and the whiskers going down the drain. We don't have that water pressure and that's not what it was designed for. Therefore, it's unsafe environment. Therefore, I'm asking you to please not shave in here anymore. And if they asked, you know, where is it in the policy? I guess we would just say that we're noting that it's an, you've made this an unclean environment and it's unsafe for the facility, the pipes, et cetera. So I, I still think of it as being covered. It's just not having to be spelled out every action that potentially may happen in the library. I don't know if that satisfies your feelings on it though.
But I, I think there may be examples where we would accept that, such as a, an accommodation for a soiled individual.
You know, that was, that was the other, yeah, you're right.
But I have another question. I'm really stunned that John didn't ask my question, so. Could you define attended individual for me? If two people are sleeping together, are they attending to each other?
I, I view it as an individual could verify that your friend or, you know, spouse or whatever is, is medically okay. So if I can talk to somebody that is attending you, then I guess I would be satisfied.
So we will, so this policy will allow sleeping as long as you have a friend with you.
That's how I would read it. Yeah. So if, if, if you could tell me whether or not your friend is okay, then, then we would allow it.
Not if it's, if that sleeping involves disruptive behavior. So if there's loud snoring, if you're thrashing around, if you have chosen to sleep in the lobby across the threshold. This is more for, I nodded off in a chair in the sun while I'm reading the newspaper. And not, I brought in a camp bed and I'm going to set it up with the children. And I think that's a, that's a very sensitive topic and I, I go back and forth on thinking what's appropriate. My biggest concern is the health and wellness, that we really don't know if you're in a diabetic coma or if you're, if you're sleeping. I, I am at peace with the, the committee's recommendation because I do think that they did lots of research about different policies and, and really thought about practice. Practice first and sort of how it impacts, but it's important to point out, and I think that's something that, that all staff will need to work on too, is just understanding. It, it doesn't mean that you can sleep no matter what. It's, if, as long as you're also complying with the other parts of this policy. Sleeping by itself is not a prohibited activity.
My question is just the clarity of the verbiage, like will people understand what this means? I don't mean to open up, can you sleep in the library issue? Which is a, a very large issue, as much as is this policy clear as to what an attended individual is? Jason, I, I appreciate your meeting and I don't have a better suggestion at the moment. It's just when I read it, I thought, I'm not sure that I understand what attended is.
That's fair. I, I think the committee was at the same, we, we, we sort of just amended thinking there was an intended person in the first place, so hopefully we know, knew what that meant, but I, I take your point if, as well.
What would you do with an individual sleeping in this case, who does not have someone with them? Will you be, will you be rousing them? I mean, will you?
Yeah, the same as we would do now, which would be finding some manner of waking the person short of touching them. And then just verifying that they're awake and then letting them know, you know, there's, we, we don't allow sleeping in the library, I guess in this case, without an intended individual to confirm that you're okay. And usually that, that would follow, like procedurally, it would often just be that much. And then if we saw you again asleep, it would be a matter of, again, waking them up and then sort of mentioning, you might take a walk around and, you know, take a walk outside, get a drink of water, use the restroom.
But does the policy say that? Or I mean, does the policy say, go get a friend?
In this, in the revision?
Right, like if you want to sleep, go get a friend. Bring them in here so they can watch you and then you're okay to sleep. As long as you're not disruptive. The clarity of the policy, like I could see someone who wants to, you know, to have a protected environment, to be cooler or something somewhere. And you're saying, don't sleep even though they haven't slept for a while, unless you're going to bring a friend with you. And then it's okay. So I don't have a better suggestion. I'm just thinking that the wording is, is vague and maybe it's the best we can do. But I just wanted to at least explore the consequences of that wording.
Maybe it's largely an issue of making sure the staff understand it and have a, a common understanding among the staff. I, I, I had a question on one other section. Well, it's the no photography. I think it's 307. I, I just was surprised by that. I didn't, I didn't know that wasn't allowed and I don't know how long it hasn't been allowed, but. So if your kid's doing something cute in the children's room, you, you can't really take a picture of that. Is that right?
The way we, the way we often see it is, yeah, somebody is visiting from out of town and they're, they're The way we, the way we often see it is, yeah, somebody is visiting from out of town and they're, they're excited about the space and they're taking a photograph or, you know, with Instagram and whatnot, taking a selfie of your visit to the library. And usually it's just a casual, you know, sort of sussing out what, what this is. And then sort of, if you see somebody in the photograph that they're taking and it doesn't look like they're together, then I might go over and say, you know, we don't allow photography of others in the building or happy to let you take photographs if you just make sure you don't get people in your image for their privacy. And if we, and then Ellsworth would often get a request if it's something larger scope, like a a visit by a photographer or videographer.
Well, there's one who falls asleep when he reads, I prefer a more liberal and broad minded approach to sleeping in the library.
And that's been staff's view as well as.
You know.
You see it regularly.
Because our college, I mean, again, sleeping, sleeping, but you know, it's I'm not offended by when I walk into a library and I see a college student who's working on finals taking a cat nap.
Not disruptive sleeping.
Yeah, they're not disruptive, but it's not a hotel, right? It's not a motel, right? Somebody who's crashed out, snoring and disturbing the whole, that's a different cup of tea, but you know, for, for years you walk into the university library, finals time, and you see people grabbing a little cat nap.
Are there areas of question or concern? So I think I need to figure out how to craft the motion then probably. It sounds like there was some concern. Do we have a, a concern about the restroom for bathing and washing to the point that we would like an amendment?
No.
Okay. And then I believe there was a request to tweak the language to indicate that enforcement could be for both disrupted disruptive and prohibited behavior. Does that sound accurate? And otherwise, I know we talked about some of the other points. I guess the other question is with the attended individual, not necessarily whether or not that policy itself is in question, but more just whether or not that wording is clear to people that they'll be able to understand what it means. I think that was the, the kind of where that landed, if I understood correctly.
And I'll accept Jason's recommendation on that.
Okay. So maybe Jason, if you could reiterate what your expectations are then as to what the tweaks might be so that I don't mess it up trying to describe it.
Yes, so it sounded like in eight oh nine point three, we would amend the last line to examples of prohibited disruptive behaviors include but are not limited to. And in eight oh nine point four, examples of prohibited behaviors that are not conducive to providing, et cetera. So just, I think adding that verbiage.
Either that way or disruptive in the in the enforcement paragraph, if that's easier.
Feels clear to you. I, I think that seems fair to just add that word prohibited into those points into those. And then that would just go along with the, kind of the style of those groupings as well.
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable to me. It's arguably a little bit duplicative, but that makes it clear, like that duplication doesn't hurt anything, like it'll be more abundantly clear, nearer to the place that people will see it hopefully. Okay. Given that, could we have a motion to approve this with the addition of the prohibited language that Jason just described? Not sure, Robin, maybe?
Yeah, Robin gets it.
I said, I don't know if I was the only one. Could be Derek and I are tying.
Yeah, and, and second please.
I'll take the second.
Okay, so Robin with the motion, Derek with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any of us? Alright, thank you everyone. The motion passes. The next item then is statistics and financials.
I wasn't.
I don't see a clear part of the agenda that has that. So maybe we don't need to do that. Ellsworth, do you know? Is that, was that a?
I, I think that may have been a carryover error. This is just regular expenditures.
Yeah, that's what it looked like to me, but I wasn't sure from.
Yeah. There were a couple challenges with the, with the packet completion this month. There were some laser fish issues going on, which is the overall system that pulls things together. And we had a problem with former templates being pulled in. So I don't know if this, and anyway, I don't know if that was affected here, but I apologize for that. This was just regular. But any questions, I'm happy to.
Okay. Yeah, well, go ahead through the, the other reports and stuff then, and we can circle back to that and the consent agenda at the end. So director's report is next, Ellsworth.
Great. Report basically stands as written. That this is, it's an interesting budget year. I continue to think that we are on track as appropriate. And, and you'll see much more of that next month as we really tie those, those fiscal pieces together. Masking is, is a contentious topic right now. Where I would say in the last just three days, maybe it's, I feel like the tenor and pitch of community response around masking has changed to, to really, really becoming very personal, very mean, very sort of super dramatic. I think that there's a lot of passion here on both sides of the issue. Kind of hearing, hearing some pretty harsh things after a year of staff working through a lot of change, a lot of different models and, and it's, it's pretty tough on morale. You know, our, our current plan is to lift the restriction on the first, which is just six days away. So we're, that we're nearing that. It, it has often felt like the people who come in advocating for us to extend or hold that are sometimes it feels like I could have a little bit more dialogue with that group and they're able to hear more of our justification, more of, of our approach, more of the deadlines that we've set. The, the, some of the comments I get from the people advocating that we should have dropped this long ago are, are really, really reaching a new level. We continue to hear the incorrect notion that it is now illegal to require masking in a public building. Or that it has been shown to be damaging to children's brains or lungs or development in general. So it's it's a very significant issue. Staff are facing it at every service desk. Some days it's taking hours of managers and administration's time. So I, I continue to think that, that what we are doing is a balanced way forward. I think we've, we've tried to give that time to adults in the community can become fully vaccinated before engaging with the library without masks. The biggest challenge is just children who are not eligible currently to get vaccines. But we, we will continue to encourage masking, to have masks available onsite. Angie and her team are very much in tune with sort of the rhythms, the emerging rhythms of the use of that room. And I think if we see more issues there, we will just have to revisit it. I don't think that trying to establish different rules for different parts of the building is going to work well. I have concerns about models of doing certain times or days that require masks and certain times that don't. Like I said in the report, I am I'm curious to see if and what kind of feedback we get after the transition. My hope is that many community members, especially those adults who are unvaccinated, will continue to mask as, as part of the community and as a gesture of community wellness. But we, you know, we don't have control over that. So, so in short, I just feel like I'd like to make sure both that the board is aware that we're getting, getting some pretty hot feedback right now. But I think the leadership team remains convinced that, that what, what this, this full group, the board of administration and library staff have developed is a fair way forward. I wouldn't be surprised if the board hears more directly from community members as we, as we near and cross the threshold of change. But as always, I'm happy to help with those responses or to share things that have worked in talking points that have worked with you before. But it's, I think this is probably the, the heaviest pain point from the beginning of the pandemic, just listening to the, the, the passion and the conviction on both sides of the issue. And, and having to navigate that often for frontline staff in the midst of handling all the other responsibilities that you're doing, managing the floor, trying to keep other patrons appropriately engaged in their activities. So I am, I, I can only once again speak to the, the finesse and the skills of our frontline crew who manage this really well. I tend to get the high escalations, but, but I think it's also a real grind on the people who are out there every day. But, but we're getting there and, and I'm, I feel, I still feel good about our, our final decision. That kind of leads into moving into phase five. We've been talking about this a long time. None of this should be surprising to people. Sort of lay out that schedule of what we plan to change on the first, and then moving into later August. The only, the biggest sort of caveat or change I could imagine is if we got into the summer and there was an announcement made about the date that a vaccine would be available for children. So if, if it was known to the middle of July, we found out that that the end of August, a children's vaccine will be available, we may choose to push in-person programming another couple of weeks or something like that. But that's, that's the biggest, and then obviously if the community's numbers come back up. But assuming things continue on the trends that we're seeing now, this is our plan. And it, it feels like it's resonating with both staff. There's a good level of comfort. And I think people are excited every, every step we take to kind of re-engage the community. It feels really good. It feels like we're getting back to the library that we want to be. Any questions about that phase five that we're laying out there? Alright, again, we, we have talked about it quite a bit.
Can I answer a quick question? Member of the community asked me if you're going to have the parking spots in front return to their original length of, of time as you're entering stage five.
I anticipate going back to the original length of time. It won't be, it won't be on the first. We do have to go through council to make that change. I, I had imagined getting, making that change into, after the first, moving forward with the council proceeding is that. So I think in the, in the months of July or August, we will go back to to that. And it's not a, not a particularly difficult process. It just, it's a sort of a script. That's a, that's a great question. Anything else people are hearing from the community that, that we haven't, haven't addressed particularly that would be helpful?
Not unless you have a solution for it, a way for us to protect staff from being, being abused frankly by some of our patrons, unfortunately.
It's tough. I, I feel for the patrons as well who are, who are escalating. I think there's, there's a level of just whoever's gonna answer the phone is gonna be the one who, who hears from them. And, and I still understand the complexity of the pressure that this has created in the community. I think sometimes we just are, are the place that the venting happens, but but I do, I am concerned about staff. I'm really pleased that that the transition with masking is coming up and that then sort of rolling forward with that phase five is going to happen. I think it will give a number of things to celebrate. And I think that there's a lot of the community that will, will feel that celebratory feeling with us. So that's, that's gonna be a positive. With in-person meetings, we just got a little bit more information today, which obviously was after this. All of the, the information shared is accurate, but I did just learn that city council has, has elected to go back to in-person, starting with their July sixth meeting. They will not be meeting in the traditional council chambers. We're meeting in the large meeting room in the senior center to allow for more distancing. The city clerk believes that there'll be quite a few boards and commissions that sort of move around to different locations. Those that meet in very tight quarters are, are kind of scoping out different opportunities in the city. Of course, I've, I've included our meeting rooms on the list of potential spaces for boards and commissions that might need a temporary home. And Jeff just reminded everyone that the governor's emergency proclamation that allows for remote meetings is still in place, but that could be lifted with little or no warning at any time. So, so just sort of the idea that we should be ready, we should have a plan. I think we're fortunate at the library that we do have the boardroom, which is almost always available. We don't use that for very many outside things. But if the board would like to have us reserve meeting room A or ABC, the biggest space we can proactively for our meeting dates, we could do that and get it on the calendar. That would just be a decision the group needs to make about how, how much distancing would you like to try to have and what's, what's the easiest way to do it? I, I don't know that needs to be made right this moment, and we may even want to wait until incoming board members can be part of that. And if, if there was an urgent need to decide, like if the proclamation was lifted before the next meeting, I, I do think we could probably have some conversation. But if it feels like now is a good time to, to make that decision, that's also fine. I don't, I don't think it needs to be like officially voted on. I think we just have to decide what, if, if we want to reserve those spaces, we want to do it proactively so that we work in competition with other uses.
Doesn't sound like there are any particularly strong opinions on that one. So maybe, maybe wait and see.
Sure. And Yeah, that, I mean, the, the biggest, biggest piece for me this month is really expressing that, that thanks to the outgoing board members. Your work has made a huge difference in the community. It's been a significant, significant couple of past years, even, even just looking at those issues. I, I'm so thankful for your leadership and your willingness to work together, try working in different ways, trying to figure out what's gonna work the best. And it's been a, a true pleasure to work with each of you. And, and thank you both from me personally, but also the staff and on behalf of the community. It's, the library board is more than reading a packet and showing up for half an hour every month. This is, this is real work and and it's been a pleasure to, to do that with you. So thank you so much for that. And unfortunately shifting back a little bit of business, traditionally we have done a board dinner. That's been after a regular meetings, usually somewhere walkable. that's been after a regular meetings, usually somewhere walkable. And to to recognize outgoing and incoming trustees. I would love to figure out it what what the plan or what the thoughts are about that this year, if people want to, if people are comfortable planning something now, if if this feels too if we're not ready for a public gathering, do we want to schedule it sometime in the future? We do not have to do the nitty-gritty details, but maybe just thinking about the month and the location would be a great start.
Yeah, or designating someone to figure it out would also be one way to make some kind of progress.
And if the board doesn't want to be involved, I'm happy to plan something. I would, I don't want to plan something that goes against the vision of this group, which is really the group that's being celebrated.
But to give a little context, because we didn't do this last year. So we kind of have two years worth of people to celebrate. We would generally meet above 126 or above bricks, one of those areas simply have pizzas and and drinks. Everyone would be responsible for their own costs, other than the incoming and outgoing board members. We have historically covered the costs for those individuals. And then the staff joins us. So it's a chance to see each other in a different setting than Zoom in particular, but then in a meeting. So it's a non-business meeting, but it's a chance to really appreciate people and then to to introduce the new people to some of us that'll be working with. I just think we've kind of lost our history a little bit on this since we didn't do it last year.
I I agree. I maybe though the decision to meet in person should predate the decision to socialize in person. I mean, if if we're going to socialize in person, it seems like we should be meeting in person, which which I'm okay with, but otherwise it's a little odd to do a Zoom meeting and then we all get in our car and go drive to meet in person.
Sure.
But I agree, I'd like to see us get back to this. It it was fun.
Well, do we want to maybe just designate somebody that will be the point person to figure this out once things have settled down a little bit? Then that might be, like I said, a way to just have there be some clear responsibility on this.
Poor Kelly, this was always Elisa's job.
Yes.
I I'll take it. This is Kelly.
No, I meant the new staff member Kelly, but I was kind of laughing that we have a new person. We're saying, hey, organize an organize an event for us, okay?
And I'm I'm fine with taking that on. Ellsworth and I had already had some preliminary discussion.
Appreciate it. That that sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They obviously have a board volunteer to help.
An accidental board.
All right, great. Thank you. Is it, are there any other questions or comments on Ellsworth's report tonight? Believe we have three department reports then. Children's is first. Angie, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
I'm here and can answer any questions.
Yeah, the installation of the bookwalk looks really cool. I'm looking forward to going and checking it out sometime.
Please do. We have a new story going in about every month and yeah, it was a great first event that we had and we're getting a lot of great feedback from from people who have gone on it. So it's been a lot of fun.
Awesome.
And I want to applaud the labeling on the holiday collections. It's a very clever way to do it and looking for the same additional holidays included.
A great project. So thanks to Anne's department and all their coordination for it.
My thanks about the summer reading program. As always, I'm excited when we're done with this meeting, I'm going to give my son his his book that he got.
It's going off to a great start and I think people are really enjoying the all ages and yes, please to the board, please help us reach that hundred and twenty-five thousand book goal for the community. I don't know whose idea that was, but please, please help out and read lots and lots and lots of books by September.
Great. Thank you, Angie. Anne, is there anything you wanted to speak to on the collections report there?
I just wanted to encourage all of you to look at our Bali Legacy website or webpage. It's fantastic.
Awesome. Thanks for calling that out. And then Brent, is there anything you wanted to speak to in the IT report?
No, I don't think so.
Are there any other? Sorry, go ahead, Derek.
Sorry, Brent, I just want to say thank you. I I have been working work in the same industry that you're currently in. I I appreciate how difficult what you've gone through to to move to different infrastructures, Ben. So thanks.
Yes, infrastructure is hard. For those that are not in the industry, like they call it infrastructure for a reason. It's like in a lot of ways comparable to like, I don't know, changing roads or bridges or other things like it. Since it's such an underpinning thing, it's often very complicated and involved to make a change, especially like when, you know, cars are still going over the bridge, but you need to move it as well. That's kind of what what it ends up feeling like a lot of times. So yeah, definitely. Thanks for continuing to, you know, sort of fight the good fight and move us forward there. Great. Development office, Patty.
It was great to have Brent holding my hand when he reinstalled QuickBooks and our hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in checking was not a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in checking. But then we found the right version and yay, he was back up there. Anyway, he's awesome. I do have two announcements. This just came in very late last week. We will have an eat out to read next Thursday, July first. The very first day of fiscal year 2021, we will make money to buy stuff for the library. Goose Town Cafe is reopened. That's on Lynn Street, two oh three North Lynn Street. And they have just reopened for lunch, eleven AM to two PM. And you can eat dinner there, four thirty to nine. You can do carryout. You can eat on the street with the beautiful flowers the community's painted. Or you can eat inside and say hi to Peter and his family that own the place. So we're very grateful to them for helping us out and I apologize for the very late notice, but it was a long time ago ask and they just decided, yeah, okay, let's do it, Patty. So there's some information on the library's front webs. I think the front page of the website, I think it's up there. Anyway, and you can see Ellsworth has the beautiful stars behind him. Community members have donated about eighty of them and we're going to work on threading them and hanging them next week before Jazz Festival when the library lobby will be probably pretty busy. And we'll get them up and beautify things. Have a little fun. It was a great workshop. It was lots of fun. I will happily answer any questions. Unfortunately, the bookend opening is probably maybe more realistically toward late July. We were changing up our volunteer program a little bit and adding some consistency among the departments. And that means an orientation and a welcome back for everybody to meet lots of new staff instead of just the folks they work with. So we're we're doing things in new ways, which will be great for everyone.
I'll say Patty, it was a relief to see so many of our volunteers coming back. That was for me, at least at the top of my concern list is, oh, my gosh, what what's going to happen right with our volunteers in the bookend? So that was great to see.
Thank you. Yeah, they they are excited to. They they are nervous, but all of us are.
Patty, I have a question. As we were discussing the NOBO budget, we only discuss the expenditures and the income actually comes through your office and your work. Do are there patterns with the income side of this that we should be taking into consideration as we look at the NOBO budget? We're seeing with such a weird COVID year, there are changes on how nonprofits are having to fund their activities.
Right, we're very fortunate in that our donors have been really, really, really generous. And as of right now, our net income for the Friends Foundation is four hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars, which is a two hundred ninety-nine percent increase over last year. The stock market's performance has also helped us. We have professional investments or professionally managed investments with Hills Bank. So they have been great to us. I think all of us are nervous about what what is to come. There are some advantages. The IRS has already said the three hundred dollar personal deduction will continue for 2021 for all of us. So I know we have several donors that took advantage of that. Those are the folks who generally give a hundred dollars a year and maybe they spread it out throughout the community. We we're just going to have to wait and see. I mean, I'm trying to talk with as many people as I can to get some sense of what what they're thinking and that that's a little challenging right now. So I'm feeling good about it. The Friends Board, I think, is optimistic. But it's a bit of a gamble. But we do already have the money in the bank to give the library the usual hundred seventeen thousand five hundred. That's the undesignated money and then we give much more in designated funds and reimbursing the city for salaries and benefits and all of that.
I appreciate because we always look at expenditures expenditures and don't look at the income side of that budget. And it always makes me a little bit nervous. What are we basing these decisions on? But thank you.
Thank you for thinking about it, Robin. You can tell you were one of our wonderful reps to the Friends Board that helped explain that. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. See you July first at Goose Town or maybe not.
Thanks, Patty. All right. Next up, I think, is just my report. There's not a lot to say. I just also, I think, wanted to reiterate some of the sentiment that Ellsworth shared and say, you know, my tenure has not been the smoothest, perhaps. There are definitely a lot of challenges over the course of the last few years as I've been here. And this is my first, you know, commission. I was on the Friends Foundation prior to this, but those are the only two boards I've ever served on. So it's been a real learning experience that I did. Kind of all of that jammed together over the course of the last nine years or so. And I just want to say, of course, thank you to all of you for your service and support in doing this. I'm proud of what I've been able to do and I think learned a heck of a lot. I feel like I was definitely making up as I went along more often than not. So it was good that I had you all in my corner to help me navigate that. And, you know, I wish you all the best in your continued service and support and and working with the community. And of course, although I won't be on the board anymore, I'm around. So if you ever need anything, I can help out. Or you just want to, you know, catch up sometime, do feel free to reach out and I'm sure I will see you all around in the community as well. So again, thank you very much and especially to those other members that are wrapping up their service. It's been a pleasure. And then so the next item on the agenda is announcements from members. Is there anyone else that had anything they'd like to share?
Just like to echo the profound gratitude, especially to our outgoing board members. I I know in in some instances, we haven't seen eye to eye, but I really very much value each and every one of you and just thank you for teaching me.
Yeah, I kind of got to cheat. It's somewhat of a long story, but my my tenure has really just been like three years. But let me tell you, like, we really packed it in. So it's a very busy, very full three years for sure. Okay, great. I don't think we have any committee reports. There was one thing in communications, this letter of being thankful for the opening of the libraries. And then otherwise, I think we just have a couple of things left. So the next one would be the consent agenda. So that's going to be the minutes for the May meeting. The dispersments and yes.
The the Friends Foundation Board did meet.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead.
I just, I I did attend the meeting and I took lots of notes, but Patty very kindly sent me a summary of the Friends Foundation Board meeting. Angie gave a very good presentation about the summer reading program. And they amended their gift acceptance policy slightly. We saw the third quarter financial reports and they elected new officers for FY 2022. And Catherine Erickson will be president. Jenny Olson will be vice president-elect. Jeff is continuing as treasurer and Aaron Doherty will be secretary and Laura Evanger is rotating off and will be past president. And that's the summary I have.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed that. I didn't realize. Are there any questions about the the Friends proceedings? Great. Thank you, Carol, for sharing and for representing us over there. So then for the consent agenda, I think it's the dispersments and then the meetings from the last, sorry, the the notes from the last meeting. Are there any questions or comments on any of that?
Move.
Good, Derek, move to approve the consent agenda. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Carol, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Right, consent agenda passes. So the next last thing then is just setting agenda order for July. Have it in here somewhere.
One suggestion for the cal, the agenda for July. We have a double entry here for July and August of a strategic plan update. Looking at the amount of July content, some of which is specific that we do have to do. I'm advocating that if the board is comfortable, that we move that strategic plan update August. It's it's just a regular update. I don't think it will compromise anything to move it one month. It just feels like the least time sensitive item from a pretty heavy agenda into what is conceivably a very light.
I agree.
Okay. Any concerns about that? Doesn't seem, okay, okay. So if that gets moved across, it looks like the things that will remain are to review the annual report, which we talked about a little bit earlier today, but just with the extra details and things that we described. To review the NOBO budget with those extra details for adoption. Look at the memorandum of agreement for the Friends Foundation and then review fourth quarter stuff. Couple of department reports. It says policy review TBD. I don't know if that's still TBD or or not, Ellsworth, you know, if there are particular policies that will fit in there, we're not sure.
We are looking at the calendar for policies this coming week at the leadership team meeting. So we'll be casting that whole, the annual review cycle coming up. So we will, we will have policies to review, but we don't know what they'll be right now.
Seems fine. Anything else that anybody wanted to make sure gets slotted into the agenda? I think it already contains everything that we talked about from this meeting to reappear in next meeting if I'm not forgetting something. Okay. I think that brings us to adjournment then. It's a little bit of a long one tonight. But we did some good work and again, thank you all. I've certainly enjoyed my time getting to know all of you and working together. And no, don't, don't be strangers. And yeah, the meeting's adjourned. Thanks.